I'd like to call the order, the meeting of the village board for November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. Could you please join us for the pledge of allegiance?
He's a flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under.
The United States. Screwed up.
Village clerk, would you please call the roll?
President De Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Frye? Trustee Frye? Trustee Frye?
She's saying here, but I don't think we can hear her. Trustee Frye, one more time?
We'll send Chad in to help set that up.
All right. Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's seven.
At this time, we will now move to the public hearing on the village's twenty twenty-one annual budget. The village's annual budget must be adopted before the beginning of the village's fiscal year. The village held a public meeting in October to discuss the proposed annual budget and will now hold a public hearing before considering the adoption of the annual budget. Village clerk, would you please call the roll to open the public hearing on the village's twenty twenty-one annual budget?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye? We're gonna go with yes. Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The annual budget has been available both at village hall and on the village's website for the public inspection since November third, two thousand and twenty. Legal notice was also published in the newspaper. The twenty twenty annual budget and community investment program totals seventy-three million, one hundred seventy-three thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars. The annual budget is balanced. It includes several infrastructure improvement projects. So if any person would like to speak on the village's twenty twenty-one annual budget, I ask that you please approach the podium and state your name for the public comment.
Your honor, I just want to remind everybody that this budget is balanced. We did it without a property tax increase, which we're very proud of. It is conservatively budgeted and we are prepared for whatever the pandemic continues to throw at us. It's a lot of uncertainty, but we believe our financial acumen is sufficient.
So if there's no in-person public comment, do we have any online public comment?
We do not.
So this will conclude public comment on the village's twenty twenty-one annual budget on the public hearing. Is there any further discussion on the twenty twenty-one annual budget? Is there a motion to close the public hearing on the village's twenty twenty-one annual budget?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries, the public hearing is closed. We will proceed with the regular order of business on the village board meeting agenda. At this time, we'll move the public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name. Do we have any in-person public comment?
Do not have any in-person public comments.
Is there any online public comment?
Yes, we do have one from Mr. Dale Guccinella. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Dale Guccinella of Eight Thirty Fairway Drive. And she states, since two thousand and ten, my commercial property has had five major flood events, two of which occurred on May fifteenth and May seventeenth of this year. I urge the village board to continue the efforts to mitigate the flooding that still occurs in Bensonville during large rain events. The SSA did not give relief to the businesses on Fairway Drive, which routinely flood with a heavy rain event. We received, we received the water west of eighty-three with old infrastructure that is incapable of moving large volumes of water it receives from the west. Streets on either side were given relief from flooding by the SSA and other projects, but Fairway saw no improved infrastructure, but is still paying the SSA fees without any improvements. I urge the village to continue to allocate funds to improve the flooding in commercial areas. We are the backbone of the tax base and Bensonville by eliminating these issues, property values go up and property taxes do as well. Please invest in the small and medium-sized businesses on the street, the businesses that have been here for forty years supporting this village. The sign by Supreme Drive says Bensonville gateway to opportunity. Invest in new projects for our area, including one that is to enlarge the culvers on Fairway Drive. This way Bensonville can be a great gateway to opportunity for businesses, large or small.
We know Dale, Dale's a very good small business owner. We, she's a strong advocate for small business. It's challenging stormwater issues over there. We're gonna continue to work with her to see if we can come up with solutions.
Thank you. Is there any other online public comment?
There is none.
This will conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty village board meeting?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the minutes are approved. Onto the next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of two million, one hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars, twenty-eight cents. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the warrant is approved. There are no items on the consent agenda. Under administration, the resolution authorizing a contract with Travelers Insurance and other incinerary insurance companies for comprehensive liability insurance package effective December one, two thousand and twenty. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Thank you, your honor. We have Gary Ferguson, who's our HR director, as well as risk manager, to join us with any questions. We have two insurance items on the agenda tonight. This one is a, is the liability insurance, which did go up about three point two percent, which is moderate. We do have some good news in the work comp that will offset the increase coming up on the next agenda item. So this is the liability-related insurance, obviously running the village and having a police department. There are significant liability concerns that we have. This is to help mitigate those concerns. Anyone have any questions?
Does the board have any questions for Gary or Evan? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Number two is a resolution authorizing contract with the LMI Public Risk Fund for workers' compensation insurance effective January one, two thousand and twenty-one to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second discussion?
Gary, I kinda went to bring you into this conversation. We've, Gary and I have been working very hard to reduce our workers' comp exposure. Gary, do you wanna talk about some of those efforts that have led to this decrease?
We get into a help group and it made us form a safety committee. We've met about every other month and it is significantly reduced, in their opinion, what we got. And today we just got a grant telling us that we were gonna get initial thirty-four thousand in grant money and they're saying sixteen thousand dollars of this is because of our loss ratio. So that's, it's a real great thing for the village. Every department is part of it and Evan chairs these meetings and the, the insurance company is just very happy with our effort. And it's unheard of to go down this much in insurance. So it's been a team effort.
Any questions for Evan or Gary? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Number three is an ordinance approving a professional service agreement by and between the DuPage County area project and the village of Bensonville, DuPage and Cook County, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
There's a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So this one is near and dear to my heart. We do have some members of DuCap in the audience. The county gave us per capita allocation for coronavirus relief. Everybody in the county got the same amount on a per capita basis. I went back to the county and said, hey, Bensonville is, our numbers are high. We need to do something to help address this. And they said, put a program together and let's see what we can do. So I put a program together to hire a COVID-nineteen outreach coordinator, issued an RFP, and DuCap, who we do have a partnership, existing partnership with, responded and they will serve as our front lines for responding to, especially in the Latino neighborhoods and apartment buildings, as educating people about the risk and prevention strategies for the spread of COVID-nineteen. So we really hope this is an innovative way to start addressing the pandemic head-on.
Anybody have any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Number four is an ordinance of the village of Bensonville, DuPage and Cook County, Illinois, amending various sections of Title One of the Bensonville Village Code. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, so this is a cleanup of the administrative code. The big takeaway here is we are eliminating the deputy or the assistant village manager from the org chart. I never had a deputy village manager that we left that vacancy open to make sure I could do the job. I think after four years I have shown you I can do the job without an assistant village manager. So we're gonna eliminate that one out of the org chart.
Any other questions for Evan? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number five is a resolution authorizing a purchase of PPE and other related expenses and then not to exceed the amount of twenty thousand dollars to be used for COVID-nineteen outreach coordinator programs. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
This is related to the DuCap contract is we'll be purchasing twenty thousand dollars worth of PPE and other COVID-nineteen related supplies to kind of build a stockpile for the village. This is all grant-supported and we reimburse through the DuPage County Cares Act.
Any questions from the village board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. On the community and economic development ordinance amending section nine dash fifteen dash five of chapter fifteen of Title Nine of the Bensonville Municipal Code. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second discussion? Scott?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, this is the amendment to the building code, section of our municipal code. As you know, we register rental units here in the village on a yearly basis. It's approximately four hundred and fifty properties. You recall back in March, we embarked on a new program to do online registration and so forth with net assets of the rental registrar program. This takes that ten dollar per property, one dollar per unit fee and amends our, our, our registration fees to reflect that, that cost. As you know, at times the registration of these four hundred and fifty properties has been, as we said in the Greens, you burden someone unwieldy. This, this online registration should make our system way more efficient, cut down on incompletes and middles and the uncertainty about scheduling. So we do recommend approval of this ordinance amendment.
Thanks, Scott. Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye? Trustee Frye?
Press the mute.
She's saying yes, but she's still muted.
Okay. All right, so I'll take that as a yes. All right. Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
All right. Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Do you want to reflect that Trustee Frye stepped away for a few minutes? Technical difficulty?
Yep.
Number two is an ordinance approving a special use permit to allow motor vehicle repair and parking variations at ten forty Waveland Avenue. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second discussion, Scott?
This is a small industrial building on Waveland Avenue, east of County Line Road. It's a special use, of course, as you said, for motor vehicle repair. It's a body shop proposed. The variations are all relative to, to parking. That is all actually existing on this small industrial building. So we wanted to legitimize those parking spaces so we can move this business in there. Public hearing was held back last week, the tenth of November. The CDC voted unanimously four to zero to recommend approval with a series of conditions, most of which are just regurgitating sections of our code. Triple basin sewer, mechanical ventilation upgrades, sprinkling the spray booth, and then of course legitimizing these parking variations from eight cars to seven and backing on the Waeland Avenue, things like that. It's a good use for this building. This building's been vacant for a while and, and the staff recommends approval. And as I said, the CDC unanimously recommended approval last week.
Any questions from the board?
We'll say that Kistner is in the audience tonight.
Any questions for them, for the people in the audience board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Number three is an ordinance approving special use permit to allow a gun sales establishment on eleven eighty West Industrial Drive. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second discussion. Scott, just so we make this clear, I know it says gun sales establishment, but can you please explain that, please? We are not selling, we are not selling guns?
Yes, that's correct. We're not selling guns. Schmidt Tools bought this building back in two thousand and eighteen as a second location of their family machine shop business that's headquartered in Villa Park. And the son and daughter run this facility here in Bensonville. Back in two thousand and eighteen, we granted a special use because they, as they made parts for firearms. And ATF said that, that qualified to get a license from them and, and that, of course mandated a special use from us. Now Schmidt Tools is looking to add a second business in the same building. We Tech One, as they're calling it, to manufacture more parts and also a full firearm. We Tech One is, it's evidently, I've seen it, the prototype, it's a small firearm and they will wholesale these out to Utah, actually. But they do need the special use to manufacture those here in their machine shop. I've turned the facility. It's, it's beautiful. It's well-maintained. We do recommend approval of the special use. You'll notice material provided, the findings of fact from the CDC public hearing and so forth. Reiterating, there are no online, or excuse me, no retail sales at this, this location. That is also a condition of our draft ordinance that you have in your packet. Last week on the tenth, the CDC recommended approval as we do tonight.
Okay, just making it perfectly clear, they are not selling guns on the premises. Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Trustee Frye is absent currently.
Okay. Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes, him and I.
That's five.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Number four is ordinance approving a site plan, preliminary plat of survey, zoning map amendment, and the preliminary planned unit development with code departures for the redevelopment of the Mohawk Terrace subdivision. That was a mouthful. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second discussion, Scott?
Yeah, it's a big, a big piece of property. This, of course, is a Mohawk Terrace neighborhood at the southwest corner of Devon Avenue and Route eighty-three at the far northwest corner of town. The site itself is round numbers here tonight. Sixty-nine acres with just over a hundred properties, single-family properties here. They've all signed contracts to sell to M.L. Realty and Pro Lodges, the contract purchasers of this, this whole, this whole site. As the mayor said, it's looking to rezone from R-one, single-family, to I-two, our general industrial district. We do have a preliminary plat of subdivision for four lots, one building to go on each lot, preliminary planned unit development, which the petitioners have sought to help the village have greater control over the design and the aesthetics of the property. And then, of course, the site plan that goes hand in hand with that. As I mentioned, there are four buildings, round numbers again, three hundred thousand square feet apiece for one point two million square feet. We have a north-south alignment of the buildings, provide a good streetscape along Route eighty-three, and then the eastern side, which would be Route eighty-three, is buffered by the commercial properties along Route eighty-three. And then a large wooded area down at Denny Hill Drive. The, the site plan, like I said, lots of green spaces included. And here we have what we dubbed the green spine between buildings two and three, which provides walkways and seating areas so that people that work in these buildings have an opportunity to get out during their breaks and lunch hours and so forth. And of course, whether it's others, or excuse me, our zoning ordinance, we've got walkways throughout the property as well as taking the, the employees out to Route eighty-three where, of course, the base bus routes could drop them off and pick them up for work. The departures, very few for a property of this size. One of our standard issues we have with trucks, the curb cut and driveway whists to get the turning radiator for trucks, we have to grant that departure. We do, we do talk about parking location, and, and this gets a little into the weeds, but we have some land bank parking along Devon that the mayor may not need depending on the amount of office space in these buildings. Our code does require, if you have over fifty spaces, that it should be the dominant feature. Kind of goes to a lineal thing. The landscaping provided along Route eighty-three and the mountain avenue should buffer that parking and we're comfortable with that departure. We also have a departure for the maximum number of parking spaces. Often we see people want fewer cars than are required. In this case, when you add in the land bank parking, they exceed the maximum number allowable in the code. Again, those would only be needed should we have a lot of office space in these buildings. And tree replacement. You'll recall that in the two thousand and nineteen ordinance, we established a tree replacement section in our zoning ordinance. They are planting approximately sixty or so parkway trees and four hundred and forty-one, I believe it is, four hundred and forty, four hundred and forty-one trees on site. They do, I believe, meet the canopy coverage, but they've agreed with staff, I will codify this, at final planned unit development, for a cash and lieu payment of two hundred thousand dollars to our tree fund. We thank them for that. Well, we, we do have in our packet the, the property tax implications, and I don't know that we need to go into that. Suffice it to say that property tax, the special taxing bodies, or the taxing bodies, pardon me, and the village increased dramatically should this go forward. We do recommend approval of, of the, all of the above. We found the findings of fact relative to the zoning, rezoning, I should say, the preliminary plat, the preliminary planned unit development with the, and, and the site plan are all in your packet. The CDC had the public hearing this past week and similar to the other items on the agenda this evening, they did recommend approval to the board of all of these items as the staff does as well. And we're excited about this, frankly, so.
This will be probably one of our largest developments in the coming years. We're excited to see it go forward. We are very cognizant that the residents of Bensonville are sensitive to the neighborhood being bought up from the O'Hare expansion days. So from the outset, we said, we told the developers, don't come talk to us until you have a hundred percent of the properties under contract. We didn't think that was gonna be possible, frankly, but they were able to do that. All the residents up here received fair market value and significantly more, in my opinion, than the homes were worth. So seems like most of the residents are happy to. So this was, isn't typically what we like to engage. This was almost the perfect project for this.
Does the board have any questions?
You know what I do?
Oh, I did too. Oh, sorry, man.
Go ahead.
I was just curious, Scott, do you know when they plan on breaking ground if everything goes through smoothly?
They, they have told us they wanna move quickly. I know without talking out of school, there's, if this goes forward, they're scheduled to close here in early two thousand and twenty-one on all of the properties and then would wanna move forward with all due haste and demolish the, the properties here and begin site work.
The petitions are in the audience. Can I request, why don't you take the podium to answer these so we don't speak out? May I introduce myself?
Tim Geiser, M.L. Realty Partners, One Pierce Place. We're gonna close at the beginning of the year and we'll start. We did get postponing occupancy. Some of the people can live there for a period of time and then once they're out, we'll begin demolition and we'll roll into construction right after that.
Okay. No, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Based on the aerial view that I'm looking at, we're only talking about the red, the red portion that's on the map. Am I correct?
It's basically going from Devon to eighty-three and back, right?
Correct.
If you look at a village map, of course, it's, with the exception of the, the small commercial properties right at the corner of eighty-three and Devon, the Buc-E's gas station, on-time messenger service and the Ameda Health Office Building. It's all of the, the property west of that. On a zoning map, it would be yellow. The, the red would be the small commercial on the corner, the yellow designating the residential property. It's totally surrounded on all the other sides by Elk Grove Village Industrial, except for seven hundred feet down at the southeast corner of the site where Bachi Pizza and Dunkin' Donuts are.
Well, this is always a tricky neighborhood for the village. It is not served by sewer, nor is it served by water. So all these homes are on well and septic, which is kind of an ancient style of house. So we were, the village is either gonna need to make significant investment with these houses or gonna lose value.
Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Under finance and ordinance adopting the annual budget for the village of Bensonville for the fiscal year commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-one and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance? Do I have a motion to approve? Hello?
You have a motion.
All right. Is there a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
Julie, do you wanna go over this item?
Sure. This is basically the same budget that was reviewed, viewed at the budget workshop on the twentieth of October with some minor changes. We added some revenue related to a PG&E energy program that wasn't in there before that affected the Parks and Rec Fund and the Water and Sewer Fund. And about twelve hundred dollars worth of training fees were added to the police portion of the general fund. Otherwise, it's the same budget that we approved at that workshop. We published the public hearing and you conducted it earlier today. So we're past that point. Now all that's left is to approve the budget itself so that we can get the ordinance into the counties.
Oh, I think we may have just lost Julie.
Oh.
Julie, if you can hear us, we've lost your video feed. You may wanna try to reconnect, but I'll try to handle the rest of it until then. So that, yes, Julie summarized the budget, as you mentioned earlier, zero percent tax increase is the big highlight.
Any other questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number two is an ordinance adopting the twenty-twenty tax levy for the village of Bensonville, DuPage and Cook Counties for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand and twenty and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Seeing a motion and a second, any discussion?
Julie, do we have you? Okay. So as we just approved the budget, this is the tax levy which sets the property taxes and we are keeping property taxes flat.
So no raising of taxes this year, everybody. So, no raising of taxes this year, everybody. With that being said, is there any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number three, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable general obligations refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2020A, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8,900,000 and a taxable general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2020B, in an aggregate, aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4,700,000 of the Village of Bensonville, DuPage and Cook County, Illinois, for the purpose of refunding portions of certain, of the, certain of the village's outstanding alternate revenue bonds, authorizing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection therewithin, authorizing the execution of one or more bond orders, and paying the cost related thereto. Again, a mouthful. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second, who's going to take this one up?
So, Anthony Masselli is our financial advisor. It's pure financial. I'll bring him into the conversation. Hi, Anthony, how are you?
Very good, how are you?
Can you give the board a elevator summary of what we're doing here?
Yeah, absolutely, my pleasure. So, the ordinance tonight will allow us to move forward with a, a advanced refinancing of the village's 2011A and 2011B bonds. Those bonds are callable at the end of next year. We could execute an advance refunding today with taxable interest rates and, and realize significant savings to the village. Right now, we're estimating approximately $980,000 in savings on the 11A portion, and about $430,000 in savings on the 11B. From a present value perspective, and just in terms of percent present value, both of those are over 9%.
Hold on.
Whoa.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Both, both are over 9% at the, at the moment. And just as a point of reference, you know, many people would choose to move on refundings when they, when they achieve over 3% savings is, is usually the, the minimum that you look for. So, very attractive, assuming the ordinance passes tonight. We, the next step would be to work with the rating agencies next week, receive a, a bond rating. We're finalizing the official statement. And we should price the bonds, lock in the interest rates and, and the level of savings by mid-December.
So, this is very similar. A lot of people are refinancing their homes to take advantage of low interest rates. Municipal governments no different, or interest rates are very favorable. So, this is not new debt that we're adding. This is just simply reducing the interest rate on existing debt that we already have.
Any other questions? Any questions from the board? For Anthony or for Evan? Please call the roll. Thanks, Anthony.
Welcome.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number four is a resolution ratifying the authorization, authorization of an agreement with Sal Ewing, Arnstein and Layer, LLP, for bond counsel services associated with, with refunding bond issue 2020A and 2020B. Is there a motion to approve? Did I hear a motion to approve? I think Trustee Lomax might be frozen. Can I get a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Joe, can I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion, a second, any discussion?
Yeah, so.
Yes, you have a motion.
All right, thanks, Mac.
When you issue bonds, you need attorneys to help you with it because these documents get rather large. So, we are, we have engaged Sal Ewing, Arnstein, Layer for this, and I've worked with them previously, and they provide decent, good counsel.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax? He might be frozen.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Got it. Yep. Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Onto the Police Department Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Bensonville and Bensonville Elementary School District 2 for the school resource officers. There a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Chief, welcome.
Welcome, good evening.
Want to summarize this agreement?
Yes, this is an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Bensonville and Bensonville School District 2 for a school resource officer. We have this every year. We renegotiated the agreement this year because school is on a hybrid schedule. They're closed for two weeks, and they're open, they're open part-time, part of the day, different students on different days. So, we normally go a 70/30 split. We had to renegotiate the split to make it equitable for both the village and the school. We negotiated with the school CFO, and we think we've reached an agreement that would be good for the village and the school.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Onto Public Works, a resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one, final, with Schroder Asphalt Services Incorporated for the 2019 Street Improvement Project, CDBG, for a decrease of $128,742.95, resulting in a final contract amount of $936,855.25. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
Hold on, I'm bringing Mr. Karachi in. Joe, we've got a motion, a second on your first agenda item. Sorry, I was a little slow on the.
That's okay. So, the 2019 Village Street Improvement Project took place this year on Eastview and Franzen, between Irving Park Road and Hillside. So, the project was awarded to Schroeder, I'm sorry, Schroder Asphalt Services in February in the amount of $936,855. Project is now complete. After reconciling all of our additional items and all of our credits on the project, happy report that change order number one, final, results in a decrease of $128,742.95. This brings our final contract cost to $936,855.25. This amount does fall below our budgeted amount, and staff does recommend approval.
Any questions for Joe? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Number two is a resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one, final, with the Utility Dynamics Incorporated for 2019 CDBG Annual Residential Streetlight Project for a decrease of $15,537, resulting in a final contract amount of $228,508. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second, any discussion?
Again, this is a project we completed earlier this year. Our residential streetlight program took place between York and Marion, Jefferson and Washington area. The project, after reconciling all of our additions and credits on this project, the change order final resulted in a decrease of $15,537. The amount falls again within our budget, and it is staff's recommendation to approve.
Any questions for Joe?
I was buttering you guys up with all the decreases first.
Yeah, I know. And I noticed how decreases like capitalized in here too, so. Uh, please call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona? Trustee Carmona? Okay, technical difficulties?
Sorry, yes.
Yes, okay. Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Number three is a resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one, final, with Schroder Asphalt Services Incorporated for the 2020 MFT HMA Pavement Program, general maintenance for a decrease of $31,105.47, resulting in a final contract amount of $358,898.75. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and, and a second, discussion, please.
Just continuing my theme of finishing out projects for the year with decreases. This one was our MFT pavement program. If you recall, this was a resurfacing of Grove Avenue, Plenty Wood Drive and Green Street, as well as various other patching throughout town. Our project was awarded in April to Schroder Asphalt Services. We are complete, and after our final negotiations on additions and credits, we are happy to report a decrease of $31,105. Staff does recommend approval.
Any questions from Joe? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax? Okay, technical difficulties. Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Number four is a resolution authorizing the closeout of motor fuel tax, MFT funds, to pay for roadway related.
Yes.
Got it.
Can you?
I think you're on a delay, Mac.
Yep.
A real bad delay.
Wow, sorry.
All right, so, let's, let's start again. Resolution authorizing the closeout of motor fuel tax, MFT funds, to pay for the roadway-related general maintenance in the amount of $358,898.75 from January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Can I get a motion?
You have a motion.
Uh, can I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So, again, this is kind of paperwork to close out our MFT projects for the year. This year, we utilize the MFT funds for the previously mentioned pavement patching program. However, due to COVID, we did not perform a sidewalk removal and replacement program this year. In January, we did appropriate $390,000 of our MFT funds for these two programs. Approving this resolution is a good financial practice and helps us streamline our auditing process with IDOT. Once we do that, the remaining $31,105.47 will be placed back into our unobligated MFT fund balance, and staff does recommend approval.
Any questions for Joe? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Number five, resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one, final, with Swallow Construction Corporation for the 2020 Village Water Main Replacement Project for a decrease of $259,338.39, resulting in a final contract amount of $1,803,687.79. May I have a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, so, this is our biggest decrease. This is our water replacement project for the year. This was Hillside Drive, east of Route 83. Project was awarded to Swallow back in March. We are complete. After our additions and credits have been placed on the project, we have a decrease in the amount of 200, excuse me, just under $260,000. Staff does recommend our approval.
Any questions from Joe? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number six is a resolution authorizing the execution of extension number one of a two-year contract with Alexander Chemical Corporation for the purchase and delivery of aluminum sulfate, ALUM, in the not to exceed amount of $18,831.60. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So, these next few items are all chemicals that are required for wastewater treatment plant process. I won't get into a lot of details on them because it gets really, really boring. But all of these chemicals are, chemicals are necessary. Most of them are extensions onto existing contracts. This one for ALUM is a, a product that helps with our, our settling of our, of our byproducts. So, again, it's going to get very technical, and I'm not going to bore you guys with all that information. So, it is staff's recommendation to approve this contract.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona? Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution approved. Number seven, resolution authorizing professional service agreement, extension number two, for 2021, with Tech Lab Incorporated for wastewater sampling and analysis services in the not to exceed amount of $69,044.14. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, discussion, Joe?
Actually, we stuck in our lab contract with Tech Lab between these chemicals. So, this is a contract for $69,045. It includes a modest increase over our contract for the last two years of 1.8%. This is below the 2.1% CPI for the year, and it is staff's recommendation to approve.
Any questions for Joe? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Number eight is a resolution authorizing the execution of extension number one of a two-year contract with Alexander Chemical Corporation for the purchase and delivery of sodium bisulfate in the not to exceed amount of $11,715. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So this extension number one, uh, is for the same value of the contract as last year. There was no increase in costs and it is staff's recommendation to approve.
Any questions for Joe? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries resolution is approved. Number nine, resolution authorizing the execution of extension number one of a two-year contract with Alexander Chemical Corporation for the purchase and delivery of sodium hydrochloride in the not to exceed amount of twenty thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Uh, this is just another, uh, chemical, uh, again, an extension number one. No increase in cost from last year, so it's staff's recommendation to approve.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Trust, Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and that resolution is approved. Number ten is resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing a purchase order to Sol Nice for purchase and delivery of polymer in the not to exceed amount of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So this is a chemical that we actually, uh, test every couple of years. We do some samples of different polymers to see which one reacts best with, uh, the Village of Bensonville wastewater. Um, this year we have a new supplier. Uh, Salinas is a company that has, uh, competed for this application in the past. Um, we do evaluate cost benefit ratios of all of our different, uh, chemicals that we use here and we base them on the product that they will provide to us and how much trucking we're going to need and things like that. Uh, so we do feel that this year, uh, this product is, or these products that Salinas is going to provide us are the best in the interest of the village. Uh, so our resolution does waive competitive bidding and approves a contract in the amount of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars. Um, this does fall within our budget of thirty-two thousand dollars. Staff does recommend approval.
Any questions for Joe? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries resolution is approved. Number eleven is resolution authorizing the execution of a three out of four-year contract with Winkler's Tree Service Incorporated for twenty-twenty-one Parkway Tree Pruning Program in the not to exceed amount of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred, twenty-nine dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So we, uh, do our pruning program every winter. Uh, contractors prune trees that are greater than fifteen inches while the village staff prunes those less than fifteen inches. Uh, the program for next year will include zones four and six, which includes the area east of York Road and north of Red Oak, as well of, as well as all of our parks, our trees within our parks. Uh, this is a four-year contract that was bid out in twenty thousand, in twenty eighteen. Uh, the value of the contract for twenty-twenty-one is twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred, twenty-nine dollars and staff does recommend approval.
Any questions for Joe? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries resolution is approved. Number twelve is a resolution authorized the execution of extension one of a two-year contract with Best Quality Cleaning for janitorial services at the police and emergency management headquarters in the not to exceed amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So as a LEED certified facility, we don't have the, we don't possess the certifications necessary to clean the facility and maintain our LEED certification. So we do contract out cleaning services at our police station and emergency management facility. Uh, this resolution approves an extension number one of our contract with Best Cleaning, or Best Quality Cleaning, sorry. Uh, we did bid this back in two thousand and eighteen. The value of the contract is twenty-seven thousand dollars, uh, which does include a two point one percent CPI increase. Uh, staff does recommend approval.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez? Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries resolution is approved. Number thirteen, resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order to Regional Truck Equipment for furnishing and installation of one stainless steel dump truck body for the villages fleet, which is truck number two forty-four, in the not to exceed amount of eighteen thousand, four hundred, fifty-five dollars. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, discussion?
Uh, so this resolution approves the outfit of our last one-ton dump body in Public Works. Uh, this was a budgeted, uh, item for twenty-twenty, however, it was one of our COVID cuts for the year. Uh, staff would like to move forward though with this improvement in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, Regional did provide the lowest responsible proposal back in two thousand and nineteen and has agreed to hold their two thousand and nineteen prices for two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, the cost of the upgrade is eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, we did rebudget this in twenty-twenty-one, so staff does recommend approval.
Any other questions for Joe? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries resolution is approved. Number fourteen is a resolution authorizing a two-year, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two contract with Clark Environmental Mosquito Management Incorporated for mosquito abatement services in the not to exceed amount of seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred, eighteen dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So Clark Environmental Mosquito Management has performed our mosquito abatement for at least the last dozen years. Uh, our last contract expired in twenty-twenty. Uh, they did provide us a new two-year contract proposal for twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. Uh, they also provide the village with briquettes and these are, uh, um, things that we drop in each of our, um, catch basins in order to, uh, control the larval growth of mosquitoes. Uh, staff does do that work and house the, the labor for that. Uh, the value of the two-year contract and the anticipated cost for the briquettes for the following two years is seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred, eighteen dollars. Uh, so staff does recommend approval of this two-year contract.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries resolution is approved. Fifteen is a resolution authorizing the waive competitive bidding and execute a one-year contract extension with Lindahl Brothers Incorporated for sand and stone delivery and debris hauling in the not to exceed amount of eighty-three thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve this?
You have a motion.
Resolution, sorry. Do I have a second on the motion?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So Lindahl Brothers is a local Bensonville corporation and they've been providing this service for us at least since two thousand and ten. Uh, they successfully won bids in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven and two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and six, since two thousand and sixteen, we have been approving one-year extensions and value Lindahl as one of our local vendors. Uh, this resolution approves extension number four of our contract with Lindahl that was bid back in twenty sixteen. The value of the contract is eighty-three thousand dollars. The unit cost included in the contract were increased by the CPI this year of two point one percent. Uh, so staff does recommend approval to keep working with Lindahl.
Any questions for Joe? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries resolution is approved. Sixteen is an ordinance, ordinance designating certain property as surplus and authorizing the disposition of the same. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So it is a good practice to routinely declare unused and unneeded assets of the village as surplus. So this ordinance includes a number of vehicles, equipment, parts, appliances, uh, to declare surplus for the village. Most of these items fall within the Public Works Department or the Recreation Departments. Uh, once we declare the surplus, Public Works will seek out the most financially and environmentally beneficial means to dispose of the items. Uh, staff does recommend approval.
Any questions for Joe? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Number seventeen is a resolution authorizing a purchase order to Traffic Control Corporation for the purchase and delivery of a full Matrix portable message board in the not to exceed amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred, twenty-five dollars. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, so the village recently secured a grant through ComEd's Powering Safe Communities Program, uh, to purchase this electronic message board. The grant provides us up to ten thousand dollars. It is a fifty-fifty match towards the purchase of the board. Um, staff did solicit proposals from three different vendors that sell similar products. Traffic Control Corporation provided the most economical proposal in the amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, this proposal does come with ten years' worth of cellular service that's required in order for us to change the message board remotely. Uh, it also includes radar capabilities that we can use this message board, uh, to do speed radar for our police department. Uh, staff does intend to use the board across all departments as a safety and emergency tool, as well as a notification tool for special events. So it is staff's recommendation to approve.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Eighteen is resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order to Al Warren Oil Company Incorporated for, for providing fuel tank rental and fleet fueling services in the not to exceed amount of one hundred, thirty-two thousand, seven hundred, seventy-five dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So back in two thousand and twelve, Al Warren Oil was selected as our fuel supplier due to their cost, reliability, efficiency and their, uh, equipment. Uh, they have not increased their multiplier since it was reduced actually back in twenty fifteen to ten cents above what's called the Opus Rack rate. This is the industry standard for fuel. Uh, Al Warren also owns, maintains and ensures all three of our above-ground fuel storage tanks and also maintains our associated software as part of the contract. Uh, as fuel prices are difficult to predict, we're seeking a purchase order in the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for this year's fuel purchases, which will be across the board from police, community economic development, recreation and public works. Uh, staff does recommend approval of this contract.
Any questions for Joe? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Nineteen is resolution authorizing a two-year contract twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two with Cartograph Systems Incorporated for the annual maintenance of the work management system and citizens request software in the not to exceed amount of ninety thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars, sixty-eight cents. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, so Cartograph is one of our major software backbones of our operations within the village. Uh, this resolutions will approve a contract extension of our licensing and our subscriptions for the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, uh, calendar years. Uh, the contract also includes our soon-to-go live customer service response module called See Click Fix. Um, so it is a value, uh, of the two-year contract is ninety thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. Staff does recommend approval.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Yeah.
Trustee?
Yeah.
Trustee Perez? That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Twenty is a resolution authorizing the execution of GIS consortium services provider contract with municipal GIS Partners Incorporated, MGP, for the twenty-twenty-one calendar year in the not to exceed amount of eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So this resolution will, uh, extend our contract with MGP. They are the consultant that works with all municipalities within the municipal GIS consortium. Um, Bensonville is provided an onsite GIS specialist two days a week, as well as support from MGP throughout the year for any other needs that we may have. The value of the contract for twenty-twenty-one is unchanged from twenty-twenty at eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. I will say that, uh, MGP has been very accommodating as far as COVID is related. They have provided a percent off, uh, our monthly, uh, fees during the entire COVID pandemic. So we're hoping if they do continue that, uh, we'll see the value of this contract drop as well. So, um, staff does recommend approval at the full amount of the contract.
Any questions for Joe? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Twenty-one is a resolution authorizing the execution of the PACE paratransit local share agreement for the participation in the twenty-twenty-one Ride Dupage Program. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, so this is our annual pace participation in the Ride Dupage Program for twenty-twenty-one. Uh, the term, service and cost of the program do remain unchanged for twenty-twenty-one. Uh, it's available, the program is available to all seniors and disabled residents of Bensonville. The cost of each ride is a two-dollar base fee and a dollar per mile thereafter. Uh, in twenty-twenty, the village had a hundred and eighty-eight residents participate and register with the program, uh, who took over six hundred rides on the Ride Dupage Program. Uh, the village's average monthly cost for the program after subsidy has been about seven hundred dollars. Uh, so this is drastically reduced from the old dial bus program. Um, staff does recommend approval to continue with this program in place.
Any questions from, from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Twenty-two is a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order with T-Mobile for GPS tracking services in the not to exceed amount of thirteen thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So T-Mo, T-Mobile does provide a government rate that has been well below what other cellular providers provide for GPS services. Uh, we transferred over to T-Mobile a few years back and have really seen a significant cost savings, uh, with their, with their program. Uh, the village does monitor and track every vehicle in our fleet, including public works, community economic development, and the police. Um, the cost to monitor each vehicle is about thirteen dollars per month. So the total value of the annual contract is thirteen thousand dollars. And at this point, staff does recommend approval to continue with the T-Mobile service.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Twenty-three is a resolution approving the execution of intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with the county of DuPage and the village of Bensonville for land conveyance related to the Elgin-O'Hare Western Access Project. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So this is, this is my last item for the night, so I thank you for your patience. Uh, this is a resolution approving IGA with the county to transfer right-of-way. So as part of the Elgin-O'Hare process or project, the county has agreed to take on jurisdictional responsibilities for the north and the south frontage roads. This is north and south Thorndale Avenue. Uh, the village currently owns the right-of-way at the intersection, so we have the right-of-way through the intersection. And what this IGA would do is transfer that responsibility over to the county. It does fit their program a little bit better. It removes some of the costs associated with the responsibility of the intersection, uh, and staff is going to recommend that we do approve this. Um, the village currently owns the right-of-way at Supreme in South Thorndale Avenue, as well as Seabert Court in South Thorndale Avenue. So this, uh, quitclaim deed that we would be signing as part of this agreement will transfer that ownership over to the county. Um, again, uh, this will occur at no cost to the village and no future cost to the village. So, um, our village attorney has reviewed the IGA and the associated documents. All comments have been addressed, and it's staff recommendation to approve.
Any questions for Joe? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and res- resolution is approved. See you later, Joe. Recreation, number one. Resolution authorizing the execution of a facility rental use agreement between the village of Bensonville and the Hinsdale Swim Club. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion? Sean, welcome.
Thank you for having me. Um, this, uh, resolution for Hinsdale Swim Club provides them with, uh, twenty-five hundred hours of pool time and will result in over forty-eight thousand dollars in revenue for the Aquatic Center, twenty-eight thousand, which will be, uh, taken in in twenty twenty-one.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Number two is a resolution authorizing the execution of a facilities rental use agreement between the village of Bensonville and T-Millennium Y-two K Swim Club. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second, discussion? Go ahead, Sean.
Uh, so T-Millennium is going to, uh, be renting six hundred and forty-two hours of, uh, lane space at the Aquatic Center, which will result in over thirteen thousand dollars worth of revenue, uh, for the Aquatic Center. And, uh, eighty-seven hundred of that will come in, uh, in twenty twenty-one, next year's budget.
Any questions for Sean? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Number three is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a new computer software for the recreation department from Active Network. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second, uh, any discussion, Sean?
Uh, just a little bit of background. Um, we're currently with, uh, Max Galaxy, and that current software is going to be obsolete next year as it runs on Internet Explorer. Um, with that being said, uh, staff went out, developed, and looked into other software systems. Uh, Active Net came back with the low quote of seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents, and it will be applicable, uh, for our use.
Any questions from Sean? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved.